If we're all ready. To the light, United States of America, to be repented for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kreister, Eddie, Schneider, Stevens, Garrett, Smith, Garrett, Beeson, seven elders in present, Schneider absent.
We'll go on to considered items, approval of previous meetings, payroll and disbursements.
Make a motion to approve considered items.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Roll call vote there.
Kreister?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Seven A's, zero N's.
As he said, so I gave him some talk.
Just a few updates for city council. The first three, the first two, not a ton has changed on those as for the leverage funding for the Sixth Street Transmission Main, the grant agreement is still waiting on leverage funding. The Safe Routes to School Project, this application was submitted and funded, and so there has been a coordination meeting with IDOT, which is scheduled for September 26, 2024. City officials are not required to be there if you can't be. I don't know, one of you guys, by chance?
I was gonna talk to him about it, yeah.
That's on the 26th, so that's just a coordination meeting with IDOT. Total survey's been completed, so after that meeting, we will be able to design after that. The Ozleyt Grant, there has been an update over the last week, so new applications, you guys submitted one last year, so the new applications have to include hard routes of travel from parking or park entrances to each component, so this will change a few things. We'll have to add ADA sidewalk to different components of the park that we're gonna add, and so that is gonna add some additional costs, so we're working with Kirby and Greg in modifying some things, removing some components that we can put in in a few years, so that we can have a sidewalk and accessible route of travel for any ADA disabilities, so. Those applications are due September 13th, so before next month's meeting, the second Monday, we will probably hold a public meeting for that application as well, so just to put that up there. The disaster grant, the check was received, so eventually over the next few months, we'll need a whole closeout hearing for that grant. The IEPA funding, so the city is on the content funding list, but the funding has been expended. There is an opportunity for bypass funding by January 1st, 2025. I'd say the odds of this aren't great, because what happens is, even if bypass funding becomes available, they don't offer principal forgiveness, because most municipalities take the principal forgiveness, so that'll be something we present toward the end of the year, if you're willing to incorporate principal forgiveness, we do not advise doing so, since we can get on that list for March of 25, just a few months later. And last but not least, the ITAP program, so these applications are due September 30th. We have a public meeting prior to this, there are just a few documents requiring completion and execution, and Kirby's gonna talk about the resolution, but I believe we're gonna update on that for the fourth Monday meeting, there was a few funds that are gonna get moved around, and we're just gonna work that forward. We'll have an updated resolution for you, according to you. Other than that, any other questions?
Exciting stuff.
Lots on. Thanks for your time.
Okay, we'll recover off the week, who's up first?
I don't know, a number of items on the agenda this evening, the first being ordinance authorizing borrowing funds for the water project on Sixth Street, first presentation.
Make a motion, you have first, please.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Okay, roll call vote.
Eddie?
This is first reading. Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Kreister?
Yes.
Seven A's, zero N's.
The next item is first presentation of an ordinance annexing property, this is the former Wilson Road property.
Make a motion, you have first, please.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? This is out behind the city garage, right? All right, roll call vote there.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Kreister?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Seven A's, zero N's.
The next item is first presentation of an ordinance approving a development agreement and transferring property pursuant to the agreement, this concerns the property of 102 and 104 Orange Street.
Motion? Second. Any discussion or questions? Roll call vote there.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Kreister?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Seven A's, zero N's.
The next item is an ordinance authorizing the sale of property at 1009 Birch, is a sprat.
Motion? Thank you. First, please, second, any discussion or questions?
There's a clear, blue, long lane, no?
Well, the city might have some moving lanes, but.
What's that?
Well, no, there's not, the city's been moving it for a while, so we cleared out the lanes a while.
I mean, there's nothing else from the previous owner, okay.
Okay, roll call vote there.
Smith?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Kreister?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Seven A's, zero N's.
The next item is a resolution authorizing the acquisition of real estate from Jeanette Lawson, 711 Spruce Street, and this property did have a state lien on it, however, Justin has been successful in getting the state to waive the lien.
This is the one I was wondering, questions on this?
And I think this is the being a private demo one, right Lyndon? Maybe? No?
I know there's one on Bell's, I'm not sure.
Make a motion to pass resolution.
Second, any further questions? Okay, roll call.
Garrett?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Kreister?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven A's, zero N's, that's resolution number 24-47.
The next item was the subject of a public hearing earlier, this involves the resolution authorizing execution of a pre-annexation agreement for the Performance Food Group.
Make a motion to pass resolution.
Second. Any discussion or questions? This is the Great Western Actuary, you're gonna be the best rapporteur. Okay, roll call.
Beeson?
Yes.
Kreister?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Seven A's, zero N's, resolution number 24-48.
Before we go any farther, on that industrial park, we've got all these different places that have signed pre-annexation agreements, and I know we have, we're annexed throughout to the Dollar General store and the highway, we need to bring that park in, all that sales back, money that's being made out there, we're not seeing any of it. We need to bring that park in, I've been harping for 30 years about that park, and we're right there to get it in, it needs to come in.
We gotta do.
We got, we have to force annex a couple of properties, we need to do that, because that road out there, back years ago, the Development Corporation built that road, city reimbursed them for that road, so we spent, we spent city dollars on a road that was in the county, and they're wanting to extend that road because they're gonna be building another building up there, and I don't want to see us spend a penny until that industrial park is in.
I agree, it should be removed, need to be annexed, all of it.
Because we've also had an issue out there on that industrial park road, is that we've had people driving through there, there's no stop sign, and being it's not in the city, we can't put a stop sign up, the county has to do it, so the chief has contacted the sheriff, and we're gonna try to get a stop sign put up there, somebody gets killed, we've had some close calls, I've got a call on it, the chief, thank you for making calls on that, but there's issues out there, we, it needs to be brought in.
I agree, we can get started on that project, I think, make it happen.
These are making happen right there, and you need to.
Hello?
We.
I mean, I know we, but like, which we is gonna go popular?
Well, I'm not pointing Greg, he's really sure. Say what? Pre-annexation agreement, I don't think it'll be that difficult, but we can, and I don't think we'll have a lot of opposition today, we do, we will, you know, have to take it accordingly. So we, so we, this is good on that.
All right, the next item is a resolution approving the consulting services agreement with governmental consulting solutions.
Isn't this the lobby?
You were, yes, you were probably, came to the meeting, and this is kind of temporary trial run for six months.
Six months.
That they think that was involved.
It is budgeted, it's in the budget for this project. Motion, how about that motion?
I'll second.
Second, further questions or discussion? Roll call there.
Kreister?
Yes.
Eddie?
No.
Stevens?
No.
Scott?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Garrett?
No.
Beeson?
Yes.
You can vote there to break the tie, but we need six votes.
Yes.
It was four, three.
Four, three, I'm sorry.
Opposed.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Fails.
It fails.
Next item is a resolution of support for the ITAP program. Did you still want that to go forward or carry over?
Carry over.
Okay. So I have, all right, Steve, Greg.
Okay, my thing is for oiling the roads this year, and in front of you, a guess is $211,000 worth of oiling roads. There was one bid, and the little bid was the one bidder, that's within the estimate, so.
You're planning a vacation.
Listen.
I'll make a motion that we approved the motorfield path project this year.
Second. Any discussion or questions? Roll call vote.
Eddie?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Kreister?
Yes.
Seven A's, zero N's.
Okay, then the other thing is not on the menu, but in 2018, we put together some figures about how much water we lose between the master meter and the rest of meters. I am going to have Kent and Brian get prices on some, well, Brian's gonna get a price on some microphone system that listens for leaks at valves, and then I want Kent to get a price on some cheaper camera, we can shove up a sanitary sewer, because there's, whatever that says, 90,000 reasons a year to find this leak. So I don't know if those numbers are still relevant, we can look at it, Brian's not here, but I mean, in 2018, we were losing somewhere between 38% and 44% of the water, we pumped the town, and we don't pump it for free, and we don't treat it for free, but there is a cost, and we can all argue whether it's 200,000 or 50,000, but that thing, those numbers say about 90 grand a year. I don't know what they say.
Hundred eighty.
Hundred eighty, so there's a lot of reasons to find this leak or leaks, and when we know we have a leak and can't find it, we call an expensive outfit with microphones and do some math, and tell us where to dig for the leak. I'd just like to have the whole town checked that way by us, it would be cost effective to just own our own equipment. We might find out that's $500,000, and we're talking about it, but you will be seeing a proposal for this in two weeks or a month, me trying to talk into spending some money on those two items.
Yeah, Brad, do you have to have special training to work those things, or is it pretty
I don't know, but, you know, we can.
That might be something.
I'll say what I would normally, if this was a job interview, I would say, there's nothing you people do here that I can't learn to do in two weeks.
It's got to be years.
No, if you have to be an astronaut to run it, we don't want it, but I think it does matter. As long as you know what the pipe's made out of, and what's in between me and your valve, it can tell me where to dig. In this case, we're just looking to hear a leak.
Right.
So we may not need a very sophisticated system, just, is this louder than normal? Is this, you know?
Right, I was just saying, I meant it just, if we need training, we want to add that cost, maybe to the bill or the ordinance or whatever we do.
I don't anticipate any training, but we'll, let's see what happens. Yeah, if we need training, I'll tell you that, is that good?
I think that's good, yes. Economic developments, that a lot, so let's move on to that.
Couple of things are removed, but number one, just wanted to let the council know, if I haven't already told you, if you haven't already heard, I found out on July 26th that we were awarded the USDA RVDG grant that we had applied for, that is for the Panavaza project. So just to remind everybody, total project cost on that were $415,000, I filled out the RVDG grant application for approximately 40% of the project cost, leaving a remaining balance of $215,800, which council already agreed to commit from business insurance funds. So in my application, I applied for $199,200, so apparently they got an overwhelming response on the grant applications for that program, hence making it very competitive, so in order for them to be able to award multiple applicants, they offered the ones that they selected a reduced grant amount, so of the $199,200 that we applied for, they agreed to give us $188,902, so a difference of $10,298. So item number one is just the award notification, but item number two is I need approval to apply the additional $10,298 from business insurance funds to complete that project.
I'll make that motion, I'll second.
Second, roll call vote.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Kreister?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Seven A's, zero N's.
I also feel that it's important to point out, in regards to item number one and two, governmental consulting solutions helped us obtain that grant, so, just so everybody is aware of that. Item number three, approval to apply for the 2024 Ozlyt Grant application for Ketchel Park improvements, as Seth mentioned before, that's a 50% match grant, so we're still kind of toying with the overall project and then the project budget, but we got some information in that ADA accessibility to any component that is listed in your application has to be upheld, so that's obviously going to increase your budget, needing to meet the ADA requirements, so it's looking like with comparing our previous year's grant application, kind of some of the tweaks that we've made to that, we're looking at a total project cost of $354,000, meaning that 50% of that would have to be allocated in match funds. Also, as of, like we did last year, we have $32,000 already from Panavaza funds that have been raised for the skating complex ones, so that's a deduction off of that 50% match requirement, and I do know that we are expecting additional contributions to come in, but I guess what I'm asking is that if we can apply for the Ozlyt Grant, knowing that we're going to be spending $354,000 total, well, 50% of that, so.
Hopefully, I make a motion that we apply for that. Things across the board when we get to it as far as. We're just seeing more proposals and stuff like that.
And all of the applicants have to abide by the ADA accessibility, it's just a new requirement that DNR came out with, this, this grant cycle, so everybody's project budgets are gonna go up, it's applying, I'm sure.
I second.
Second, any discussion or questions?
Yeah, our share's gotta come out, our half is $177,000, last year when we were doing this, our half was $100,000, and we never got the grant, or never got awarded to it, and with the budget, as tight as it is, we're looking now, next year's budget, that you went and put in the general fund, another $177,000 would pay for our park, that we're gonna have to come up.
Deduct $32,000 from that as well?
Yeah.
For the Panavaza contribution.
But you're still talking a hundred and some thousand dollars that's gotta come out of the general fund.
Do we have any storm faster money left over that we could have?
No, that's.
And just as a reminder too, that South Pavilion, something is going to have to be addressed with that, so, I mean, that's what, 70% of our, 60% of our match portion that we're gonna have to put up, that we're gonna have to do something with, so.
Like I said, we're gonna have to bend the budget next year, and Administration Committee is gonna have to come up with $145,000 in a budget next year.
Yeah, but if we don't track our money, we'll never, like, it's obviously, no, like, we're never gonna get a grant.
We took that, we took that Pavilion out this year too.
Yeah.
So that was gonna be, what, $80,000?
That's what we have, then.
So we didn't save that this year in hopes of getting a grant, because that's gonna include a lot more than just Pavilion, so, I mean, we kind of started the end of the game, I feel just.
The risk versus reward is very low, and I'm sure that's, we can come up with the money, we need to, so we have a motion and a second.
Yes.
Okay, roll call vote.
Scott?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Kreister?
Yes.
Eddie?
No.
Stevens?
Yes.
Five days, two days, do we have six votes on that?
No, you just don't.
All right.
Item number four and five, we're suspending on the ITAP grant application, we are going to wait until our next council meeting, so Seth, Lee and I can get some more finalized numbers to present to you and everyone. Number six, just wanted to let everybody know that I submitted a grant application for the RDMS Rise Implementation Grant Program, that is for the new water mains in the downtown area, as well as the Panavaza project, just wanted to inform everybody that that's been submitted. And then number seven, I am asking council to approve a subscription to Placer AI, that is a data dashboard company that helps with you to better understand your community, in so many ways that I can't even begin to describe to you what, what we could do with that. On the Placer AI proposal that I have, it states on there, actionable insights include accurate foot traffic counts for any location, true trade areas, displaying frequent visitor density by home and work locations, all visitor demographics, where visitors that are coming through Panavaza, or where they're going, where they're coming from, where they're stopping, how long they're stopping there, how much money they're spending there, the amount of information that can be pulled from your cell phone is, it's almost frightening, but it's also very intriguing, and it's very beneficial for a community to know this type of data. Also talks about, it's able to sort out between visitors and employees and residents, that you're getting real-time data, not just any time, I can't drive through the geographic fence that I set, I can't drive through there 20 times and count as a, as a visitor 20 times through, but it just talks about different area analyses that you can do, traffic counts, whenever I, I talked to the gentleman from Placer AI several times, he did a demo for me on a vacant property here in town, I've always been under the assumption that this vacant property would serve well as a farm supply store, after he looked at revenue leakage in our community, meaning what, we're leaving our community to go purchase somewhere else because it's not available here, comes to find out that commercial property would be better suited as a sporting goods store, we would never know those types of things though, because we don't have accessibility to understand why people are leaving our community and what they're purchasing whenever they're doing that. Those are just a few, a few things that we can do with Placer, so I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you have on that. Again, this was also put in my budget for this fiscal year and approved.
Make a motion up. Prefer this and serve.
I'll second.
Any questions, want?
So this is $8,000 a year for three years that we have to get in a contract for that?
Yes, you can cancel it anytime though, it is actually, it was $10,000 to begin with, I negotiated the price down to $8,000, some of the initial terms for unlimited users, they said we don't need unlimited users, I would only like to have two, thinking that probably like Kim would maybe want, you know, to be another user in the event that I was not here, or just for her, I'm gonna two, to be able to look it up, and then I also agreed to a three-year contract, but we can also get out of that contract at any time, we are not held to it, it's just more of a verbal commitment that we can use the service for three years.
It's, comes down to $600 a month, it's, you'd be paying them more than you paid me.
If you need to get out of the contract, is there a penalty for?
Nope, no penalty, nope.
And all this information, you use all your grants and?
Oh my gosh, that would be so helpful for grants, if anybody was trying to navigate the United States Census Bureau website, yes, this is way better. I am actually attending a conference this week in Springfield, Midwest CDI Conference, tons of communities are utilizing these types of services, Placer is one of the top three, I verified that with one of the other companies just today, so.
Did you look at the cost of any of the other ones?
I did, and one of them is cheaper, I found out today from an. I found out today from an actual user in another community in Mattoon, um, the reason that they're cheaper. Their, uh, lag time is a lot longer on, um, the data. This is, um, data like, it's readily available twenty-four hours later. With the other one, it's up to one week later, so it's not always real time accurate data.
How much cheaper was that one?
It was a thousand dollars a month cheaper. Or a thousand dollars a year cheaper, sorry.
Okay, so that one would be seven thousand dollars a year?
Yes.
And then it had a week lag?
Yes.
Doing your stuff?
There's more, there's more to it.
Difference, I mean?
There's a lot of other things in this.
There was a lot of other differences, but that's just an example. Yeah.
So other communities around some doing this, then?
Yeah.
Actually, I've never heard of this.
Yeah, I had neither, and actually, I put the guy off for about two months. I was kind of avoiding his emails because I thought it was just another spam type of thing, like it wasn't, you know, a legitimate thing. Um, I was completely fascinated and blown away during the demo. Very beneficial information.
Any community or municipality that must be committed in their day market with grants and finding businesses to come to, uses a service like this to find out what their community actually needs versus what they think it needs.
They pulled up during a demo, too, on our community, it was all three hundred and sixty-five days of the year, and you could just kind of see little spikes every now and again, and how many people in your downtown area. And one day it was, I mean, so high. And she's like, what do you guys do on Septi, the first weekend September, it was Labor Day. And we have over twelve thousand people that come to Pana on Labor Day. I would have never known that.
I know that.
I know, right?
What's that?
I know that.
Yeah. Yeah, but it's just very good information to know. So, for an example, the popcorn festival that we had. Like, we could tell right there, we could set the geo fence up around Kitchell Park and see how many people were there and where did they come from? How much money did they spend? I mean, those are all very, very beneficial things to know about your community.
So I have a first and a second, and ready for questions on time, then roll, roll call vote.
Smith?
Yes.
Garrett?
This is just our first reading, right?
No, this is a roll.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I'd like to know more about it, so I'm gonna vote no until we, I have, I need to think about this more.
Beeson?
Yes.
Kreister?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Six a's, one nay.
Um, I just have one more thing that I would like to say too, referencing item number seven under the adjournments section. Um, I obviously understand and respect the fact that everybody has their own opinions. Um, with that, I just feel that I need to add a couple of points to that. That amount was in my budget, that was approved by the city council, so that amount was already approved to spend. Um, I actually decreased my budget in several other areas to account for this. Um, little thing, I mean, I canceled annual memberships that I'm a part of that served of no benefit to the city. Um, and I mean no benefit at all, especially compared to the benefits that we could get from VPS. But I canceled other annual memberships for that. Um, and then even down to, like, I hardly even buy any office supplies, I typically just do that myself. Um, but I just feel that it's worth mentioning that it's a beneficial service that I wish would have been considered a little bit more and maybe reached out to me if there were any other additional questions before it was voted no.
Don't worry, we'll bring it back again.
Okay.
It'll come back for another vote.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you're up.
Um, I just have the special events application for Pana Pride, this is for their December to Remember event. Um, they're wanting to use the park every Saturday, starting Saturday, November second, we can set it up. Um, then, uh, start one-way traffic starting November thirtieth, for the entire month of December, with takedown on January fourth, this is for their annual Christmas light display.
Make a motion to approve the special event application with the police chief's approval.
Second, any special questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Um, just a couple of things, an update on Invoice Cloud, that's for online, um, no payment for the water bills, e-billing, automatic payments. I do, we are doing stuff weekly with the company, we're hoping to have live by the end of September.
That'll be fun.
So, um, they will help with marketing for, well, they have provided me with a bunch of marketing materials to use. They will help with notification of current PSM clients and hopefully, um, conversions. So it will hopefully be a very smooth, seamless process for those customers, so.
Excellent, very good. So we can segue from that into Tanya, nothing? Okay, I don't have anything at this point. Uh, reports of convenience, community safety?
Nothing at this time.
Any other issues?
Mayor?
Yo.
Just like to give a little information, we recently received a couple, uh, grants. One was from, uh, Illinois, our IDNR, our, Illinois Department of National Resources, um, for wildland type equipment, hose, uh, chainsaw, blower, stuff like that, uh, around eight thousand dollars. And then we also, uh, was a sponsor, main sponsor on a FEMA grant for a regional grant, and we had Okenee, Morrisonville, WIP, and ourselves, we'll weigh in on it. Uh, we received a hundred and sixty thousand dollar grant for hose, for replacement of, of hose. Uh, our part is about fifty some thousand of that, so, and we've got one more still in the works, so. I'm not making it, but they're, everything else.
Yes, it does, yes, it does. Um, community operations?
Yeah, the city clerk asked me a little bit ago, Glenn, once I brought up the Doll Run, are aware of the issue with waste management? They started a new policy where they're doing curbside, and there were, people were trying to call the company and they weren't getting any callbacks or anything. And I, I talked to Justin in the clerk's office, and the individual that was the spokesman for waste management, we had their number, so they contacted him, and you put it on our city site, the phone number for the constituents to reach out to them, and that way if they want to change providers, they can, or any questions. And it now is available to the customers, so they get the information and who the other providers are if they want to change. I just wanted, Glenn wants that brought up, so it's brought up. Uh, motion to approve a boat dock application for Michael Nola at Lake Lot H twelve?
Second.
Second, any special questions? Okay, roll call.
Kreister?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Seven a's, zero nays.
And then, uh, over the last couple of weeks, I've had all the supervisors, we were down there on Ninth Street looking at, uh, Ninth Street from Fair Avenue down to Chestnut Street. There's a lot of different, pretty, uh, city prep work that has been done on, there's stuff that, uh, there's a couple of lead source lines that we are mandated to try to change then, so. There's a lot of work we have to do, we got a storm sewer that's messed up, we're gonna change a water line, there's a fire plug that was already planned to be replaced in the valves. So, I had the supervisors down there with the city engineer, and we spent quite a bit of time down there. And then Greg and I went to, uh, see how, you know, on equipment, on how to grind up roads and that. We went to Fairstown and watched that one morning, and, but, uh, they worked up a amount for all of our prep work that we have to do on Ninth Street. So I'll make a motion, make a motion as they do prep work on Ninth Street between Fair Avenue and Chestnut Street for the estimated amount of thirteen thousand four sixty, coming from the department's budgets. There's money in the departments to take care of that.
Second, second. Second, any questions? Okay, roll call.
Eddie?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Kreister?
Yes.
Seven a's, seven a's, zero nays.
And we, we had done it down there, and there's a lot of this prep work that's gotta be done. The intersection there at, uh, Ninth and Locust Streets, bricks, and that's where we gotta run a storm sewer diagonal across it, we have to run a water line across it, and we decided that we do all this prep work, we're gonna just let it set over the winter. It's gotta settle and harden up. We try to do anything else with it, it'd be a waste of, of money. So I just wanna lay it by now, that's what we wanna do, do this prep work as we get, we gotta get our road work done first. The annual road work, and then we'll go down there and do this. I just wanna lay it by now, what's kind of going on with that? That's it.
Administration? Nothing for this time? Okay, community support.
I make a motion to approve, uh, tree planting for Memorial and Kitchell Park. My second.
Second, any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay.
And the second, um, item has been taken care of by Kirby, so we can discuss that right now.
It's included in the Ozide application.
Nothing else?
That's all I have.
Economic development?
No, nothing.
Nothing, negotiations? Nothing? Finished business? Nothing, new business?
Sidewalk petition for a crack in a D funeral.
Three oh eight, second.
And this is to help put a handicap ramp in too for the handicap parking lot. Repair a couple of spots on the sidewalk. They adjusted.
You making a motion to approve that?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Any special questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Citizens' opportunity to address the council.
Did Kirby say that the, um, lobbyist people helped get grant money?
They sure did.
Yeah, that RV DG grant for a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, that was a, uh, assignment good faith in working with the city that they have already helped us secure. That's why I was giving the overall, I was demonstrating that it was a competitive grant, we were still able to get, which we probably, more than likely, would not have without their support. And we started working on a few other projects, too, so.
Okay, if there's nothing else on the community, we will go with the question. Discuss litigation, an action is filed, admitting or an action that is probable or?